Regular meeting to order of council, or of the Planning District Board Meeting for May twenty-second at seven PM by my watch. We have an agenda before us, any changes to the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda as presented? Board member Smook, board member Ellis, all in favor? It's carried. We have a resolution to adopt minutes, Thompson Planning District Meeting, April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution two zero one eight zero zero eight, moved by board member Ellis, seconded by board member Smook. Be resolved that the minutes of the Thompson Planning District Meeting held in Council Chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? It's carried unanimously, thank you. At this time, I would, sorry, I would like to acknowledge board member David Haseman's in attendance, as well as regrets from board member Dennis Foley. We're now moving into resolutions, and just for the public's information and for the board's information for review, we have a resolution to approve the amendment to the Thompson Planning District Order in Council as amended, but before we do that, at the last Planning District Meeting, we had the resolution that was duly moved and seconded tabled, and so what we need for process is a motion to lift the existing resolution from the table, moved by board member Byer, seconded by board member Smook, all in favor? It's carried. So now we have the resolution that was tabled at the previous meeting, and since then, through further discussion, it's been identified that this resolution needs to be amended, and that's the resolution that we have, that it needs to be moved and seconded before we can move the amendment and then discuss the resolution. So I need a mover and a seconder for the amending resolution. Thank you. We now have a resolution duly moved, it's two thousand and eighteen zero zero seven, moved by board member Byer, seconded by board member Ellis, whereas under the authority of the Planning Act, Thompson Planning District was established by Order in Council three three six slash seven eight by the Minister of Municipal Affairs on March thirtieth, nineteen seventy-eight, and whereas the Thompson Planning District is comprised of members of council of the city of Thompson, the resident administrator of the local government district of Mystery Lake, and the local Crown's lands manager of the province of Manitoba, and whereas the Thompson Planning District located on the traditional territory of the Nishuasiak Cree Nation and the Tetasqueak Cree Nation has shared interests with these first nations in planning and development within the district, and whereas the Thompson Planning District was deter, has determined that the Nishuasiak Cree Nation and the Tetasqueak First Nation should be made voting members of the Thompson Planning District to formalize this relationship, now therefore be resolved that the Thompson Planning District requests that the legislative amendments be undertaken by the province of Manitoba to allow for the inclusion of the Nishuasiak Cree Nation and the Tetasqueak Cree Nation as voting members of the Thompson Planning District. I'll go to administration for support at this point. Anthony?
I wanted to say that I discussed twice at DRC, and after those discussions, a Tetasqueak Cree Nation was added.
Thank you. Would you move or council by?
It's something I support, I think we should perhaps bring to the attention of council that there were certain requests made of, in terms of checking out some background information, one of them was to see if there was any change to the Indian Act required, which of course there's none, another one was to obtain in writing approval from the province, so we should bring people up to date on those issues that were raised and what's been done.
If council would allow, I was advised on the way back from Ottawa last week that we had not received in writing the requested approval from this, from the province of Manitoba, specifically Ministers Wharton and Ministers Clark prior to this resolution being addressed and/or adopted. I stayed in Winnipeg on Thursday and tried to meet with, actually councillor Byer was in for Vision Quest, and I asked her to attend as well. We attempted to meet with Minister Clark, who had set up a meeting for us at noon in her office. At the last minute, there was a vote that had to take place in the legislation and legislature and a previous meeting that she had, so she had to cancel at the last moment. Minister Wharton assigned his meeting to his special assistant, which councillor Byer met and I met with on, at three o'clock on Thursday afternoon. We wanted to convey on a previous conference call with Minister Wharton that we had asked for written approval, written support of the verbal support that both Minister Wharton and Minister Clark had provided to us in previous conference calls, emails, and in-person meetings, and on the conference call, Minister Wharton, that was on April ninth, I believe, Minister Wharton assured us that we would have that in writing. I reconfirmed that this meeting was taking place this evening, and that we did not, if we did not have the support of both ministers in writing, then I would recommend to the board that we again table this resolution until such time as we get written approval from the province, because ultimately it's their legislation that needs to change, and if we don't have their support, which we had privately, in person, on conference calls and in writing, but we haven't seen it formally, it's a moot point if we want to move this ahead if the province isn't willing to change the legislation. So I can advise council at this time, I gave them until seven PM this evening, to advise us in writing that their support or no end support of the initiative that the city of Thompson is proposing, and have not received that, so I would suggest or recommend to the board that you table this resolution until further notice, until we hear from the province formally. Board member Byer?
His, Wharton's special assistants actually did say it usually takes three to six weeks to get a letter processed like this, for whatever it's worth, however, I would like to put forward the motion that we re-table this motion.
Okay, we need a seconder to table, board member Valentino. Moving to table is non-debatable, so we'll call for the vote, all in favor of tabling? It's unanimous, it's tabled, thank you. That concludes the business of the Planning District, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Board member Smook and board member Wong, all in favor? Carried, we stand adjourned, thank you, Mr. Haseman for attending. Okay, we're now moving into the regular council meeting for May twenty-second, called to order at seven oh eight. We have an agenda before us, are there any changes to the agenda? I'm seeing we do.
A resolution to approve councillor Byer's attendance.
We have a resolution to add for councillors, councillor Byer's attendance for an AMM event.
And also at the Community Futures, North Central Development AGM.
And also the Community Futures, North Central Community Futures AGM. So we would add those under resolutions six twelve and six thirteen. If council's okay with that, I need a motion to move the amended agenda, councillor Valentino, councillor Ellis, all in favor? It's carried. Now to a motion to adopt the agenda that's before us as amended, all in favor? Carried. We will now go to general inquiries. General, are there any questions from the general public? Please come forward, state your name and ask your question. Second time, third and final, okay, we're going to move into adoption of minutes. We have a resolution, regular meeting of council, May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, resolution number two zero one eight one three zero, moved by councillor Valentino, seconded by councillor Ellis, be resolved at minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chambers, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carried unanimously, thank you. We're now moving into committee reports, and we have the RCMP quarterly report, I would ask inspector Kevin Lewis to come forward to the delegation table, welcome.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
All right. Okay, so this is the second one of these formal reports that we've done that standardize the process across Manitoba for the municipalities, so bear with me, the composition is a bit of a work in progress. So as I explain every time I do one of these, we work on a quarterly basis for reporting, and we work on a fiscal year for our finances and our reporting for the RCMP, which runs from April first to March thirty-first, so I know the city works on a calendar year, so it's going to be a little bit skewed to some of your numbers probably. So the current establishment of the Thompson RCMP detachment on the municipal side is thirty-eight regular members, there's no variance from the previous year, and our annual budget for operations and maintenance is a million and forty-five thousand. So we increased it to two hundred and thirty-five thousand from the pooled side of the fence so that we could account for the increase of costs for the core commissioners, that was somewhat of a surprise a year and a half ago, so. Now, when I go down to our objectives, priorities and goals for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year, so each year, in the spring, the RCMP and the city meet and discuss priorities of the RCMP and where we'd like to see things go forward, what are the issues of the city, and a few strategies are identified out of that, and they're usually fairly consistent involving drug trafficking, traffic enforcement, youth engagement, those types of events, and so this, I should say, last fiscal year's objectives involved serious organized crime, our traffic, our downtown strategy, and youth. So I'll report on those quickly. So our first initiative involves serious and organized crime involving drug trafficking in the city, which includes offender management, so our offender management program, we have a crime reduction unit that goes and checks on those individuals that are higher risk to the community for criminal engagement, so they would find out who's on conditions, who they could go and interact with, and determine if they are violating any of those conditions, and then put them back in jail if they're high risk. So over the course of this quarter, we were able to do so with thirty-two prolific offenders in the community. As for drug warrants, we did thirteen drug warrants this quarter from January to March I will say that the drug warrants that were conducted involve cocaine, small amounts of marijuana, crack, so we're seeing a consistent level of cocaine in the city, we're not seeing meth, thank God, right now, but as it stands, there's a considerable amount of cocaine that was taken off the streets over the last three months. Back that up from January to March. Again, impaired driving, so there was twenty impaired driving charges from January to March thirty-first, which is at par for the previous year, traffic enforcement, there was ninety traffic tickets that were issued during that period. We conducted three visits to the damp house at ninety-five Creek Road, and in regards to harm reduction activities, there were seven hundred and nine harm reduction activities for the quarter. We also have Project Detox, which identifies high-risk individuals that interact with police on a regular basis, and we try to get them into the court system to get mandated drug counseling and treatment, so, which is slowly working for some of the individuals. And we had three hundred and thirty-six community relations events attended by our police community relations unit over the quarter. So on the section four, current activity statistics, we see the calls for service year-to-date, going back from April first to March thirty-first, seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-one, which is up about seventeen hundred calls for service from the previous fiscal year. Now, as for traffic tickets, over the course of the fiscal year, seven hundred and eighty-four versus six hundred and twelve the previous year, impaired driving charges, a hundred and twenty-one charges last fiscal year versus the previous fiscal year of six hundred, sorry, of ninety-nine, twenty-two drug warrants over the course of the fiscal year versus ten in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and we had a hundred offender management interactions, we weren't recording those in the previous year because it's a new measure, and youth engagement with six hundred and forty-three events that were attended by our police community relations unit last, last year versus the four hundred and seventy the year before, and fifty-six visits to the damp house versus sixty-six the previous year, and overall, twenty-nine hundred and forty-nine harm reduction actions for the year. So I will add that in, within the calls for service, traffic tickets are counted in our calls for service, so out of that seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-one, that does include traffic tickets. We'll skip along to resources, so again, we're established at thirty-eight members, and we currently, at the end of the fiscal year, we had thirty-five, being three short. Mind you, we have six incoming and seven outgoing, but again, waiting home sales, transfer paperwork, things like that, and majority of our incoming members are brand-new cadets from depot. Our public service employees, we have two of them, and their, those positions are full, municipal employees, we have nine, and six of them are full, three are waiting hiring processes, and we have provincially funded positions that are benefit to the city, which include a special constable position that's full, and who's in the PCR, our police community relations unit, and as well as one public servant. So all in all, we had seven cadets arrive during the last quarter, we had four cadets that are going to arrive in May and June, we have one constable, one corporal that are incoming in the next month or two, depends on their home sales where they currently are, and we have two members on maternity leave, and that's about it for the resource overview. In terms of the budget, so each summer, we bring in the reservist, who, cost, the cost for the reservists is about seventeen thousand last year, our overtime for regular members is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, core commissioner costs for our, which is our prison guards, for the city prisoners is, was two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Now I'm going to ask the core commissioners to audit that amount because it doesn't seem consistent with what I would expect, it seems a little bit high, so I'll get back to you on some figures that are, after the audit is done on that. And then again, prisoner expenses, which includes prisoner meals and supplies, is about twenty-seven thousand. Any questions?
Questions, council? In regards to the report given? Councillor Wong?
From your report, then, the current activity statistic, looks like everything go up from last year up to date, two thousand and sixteen to seventeen, all the reports shows like everything go up except the damp house visit, which is probably understandable, all the activity going on, so can you, can you give me a little explanation of the youth engagement events? It seems like go up quite a bit, any rationale why it is seen as a considerable perspective, why it's gone up such a big number?
Yeah. Sure, yeah, and so with our police community relations team, so we have two members, the provincially funded community constable, and we have a regular member constable in the other position, and their sole purpose is to go out and engage youth, do school talks, those types of events, so it just depends on their planning for the year and some of the commitments from outline organizations as to how many of those events they can get to, and this year, they were able to do a bit of, a bit more of all-inclusive planning that could get out to more events, and to host more events, including more programming at the schools, like we have the cops, kids and computers program ongoing right now, which involves regular interactions, so things that are more scheduled rather than the ad lib, ad hoc type of presentations.
Would it be another reason you see there's more youth doing a lot of vandalism around, that you can see quite often from Facebook, the people even take picture and then stuff like that, so prevent, prevent things go bad? Would it be part of the?
We find a pretty tight correlation between vandalism in the city and our, our youth that are AWOL from the group homes, so there's usually a pretty, there's a pretty consistent, if they're AWOL from the group homes, that means that they're probably out there up to no good in a lot of ways, right? A lot of the time, so that's why we try to intercept them before they get to that point, and we're hoping to work at further engagement to try to get some of the further programming in place, or some type of interaction where we can get them to stay at the group homes more often than not, to prevent this type of activity where they're up to a mischief.
And I also want you to touch on the call service, it seems like increased a lot, can you, what is kind of why, why you think that the call hours like increased due to what kind of reason that you foresee, or?
Yeah, it goes year to year, it just depends, some of the trends I'm seeing this year are, the community safety officers were out of service for a brief period there, there are some different scheduling with them where they're, they're not available to pick up some of those calls that they normally would to take the heat off of us, and we see that with the lodging numbers that they lodge themselves, they're lower now than they have been before, again, could be a scheduling issue, so when they are not picking up those folks, which they're usually there to do that, then that means that we're doing, so in terms of the intoxicated individuals in the street, so they usually look after ninety percent of that for us, right? And this year already, I'm starting to see faces on the street that I don't know, and it's starting early, earlier than normal, like usually this is, it's June before we start seeing folks from the communities work their way into Thompson, but we're already starting to see the faces that aren't familiar to Thompson, so, but it just goes on waves, it just depends.
What's meant by harm reduction actions?
So harm reduction would be anything where we find, a member finds somebody that, you know, whether it's an intoxicated individual that's passed out, whether it's, say, a vulnerable female or a vulnerable youth in a intoxicated state around individuals that could be nefarious, could be somebody that's passing out in the snow, those types of activities where there's something where somebody's life or some type of danger could come to these individuals, and they score it as a harm reduction activity to prevent that harm, right?
I have a question about calls for service. In terms of the year-to-date, it looks like our year-to-date this year has increased significantly. I know it's probably unfair to compare just two years, but, you know, how does that compare to previous years before that, like how does the seventeen four twenty-one sit?
It's fairly consistent, so we've seen a dip in calls for service, so two thousand and fifteen was probably our lowest, and then two thousand and sixteen it started to go back up, and then two thousand and seventeen, now here we're seeing the higher level of it, but there's been years where it was up into the eighteen thousand, so it's still lower than it has been, but again, it just depends on who's out of jail, how many youth we have right now, again, contrary to previous years, we did not score missing persons for AWOL youth, and so now we see about two thousand AWOL youth coming from the group homes per year, which we never used to score them as that before, it would just be a quick assistance file and, or no file at all, but now we record them differently, so it adds another couple thousand sometimes to the year, it just depends.
Counsel will indulge a couple of things, first off, Inspector Lewis, thank you very much for the presentation, and again, I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Thompson and our residents for the service that you and your people provide, it's always of high caliber, of highly professional, and always quick to respond to any issues that arise for the safety of our community, so thank you very much on that part. In regards to the report, a couple of things, just to clarify, the youth interaction numbers that are rising, for clarification of the general public, that's a positive, in the sense that this is proactive actions by the local detachment to engage youth so that they don't get into issues, so that, we want that number to go way up. The more the RCMP interact with the youth, the more comfortable the youth are with them, to the point that they've been featured in the, in the newspaper in regards to one officer being in the high school and interacting on a daily basis with high school kids, and so that's a positive number that we want to see. Secondly, just to, to move to the national level and to, and I want to acknowledge, I'll probably embarrass Kevin, but in his previous position with a former inspector, they were very involved in the, the community safety officer program, and the development of that, in the sense of, of taking a load off, as you mentioned, in some instances. I was in Ottawa last, last week at the national meetings, and these national meetings include all the assistant deputy ministers of justice from across Canada, there are four municipal reps from across Canada, which I'm one of, Public Safety Canada and RCMP, and because the, the new commissioner, Brenda Lucky, was, has just been commissioned as the top cop in Canada, she addressed our group, and there is a Thompson connection there, she worked with Kevin in this detachment previously, and also the, the second highest commissioner, the deputy commissioner, is Kevin Bressot, who, those of you who've been around for a while will remember, he was our commanding officer for the D-division, and he was also instrumental in the establishment and the working relationship with the RCMP and the community safety officers, and it was very humbling to hear both the commissioner and the deputy commissioner highlight to all across Canada in that room, the CSO program in Thompson, and how it's working, because the problem, the issues that the RCMP are faced with, and Kevin knows this firsthand, he mentioned that we are supposed to have thirty-eight officers, and that ranges from anywhere from thirty-two to thirty-eight in a given year, a given quarter. That's a national issue for Canadians, communities that have contract policing with the RCMP. They run about a fifteen percent vacancy. Right now, there are forty troops at depot, and that will not sustain the vacancy with the upcoming retirements, and the competition that the RCMP are now facing between other policing forces, whether it be city or provincial in Quebec and Ontario, and so one of the biggest issue right now is the unionization of the RCMP and the pay inequity between what these people receive and what they could receive if they went to another force, it's a competitive market, and so there is discussions in regards to ramping up depot to produce more, more police officers, so that's a big, a big issue. The other issue to, to look at it through a different lens, as Inspector Lewis has already talked about, reservists and auxiliary members, retired, members that have retired and that, but still want to do work for the RCMP, so an example, when a G-seven event happens in Ontario or Quebec, and they require extra policing services, rather than pull from our detachment or a detachment in Saskatoon, they would be able to draw on reservists or auxiliary to assist in the securing that event, a national event, so they're looking at various ways to make sure that the communities that are under contract receive the needs and the force that they require, and so again, it's, it's between a good relationship between the local detachment and the local city and council, and it's also, again, we don't brag enough, but the fact that the city of Thompson and the CSO program is continuously mentioned by the commissioner and the deputy commissioner of RCMP as a successful way to partner with the local police force and the community speaks volumes to that. So I just wanted, again, thank you very much for the report and the work that you do on a day-to-day basis, and please pass along that to the members. Thank you. Next up, we have the Development Review Committee, and we'll have the Chair, Penny Byer, councillor Byer, provide that report.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank our Director of Development Services, Anthony McGinnis, very much for putting this together for us. Council members include myself, councillor Clatta, and Mayor Fenske, citizen and organizational reps include Dwayne Porty, Stella Locker, Baftma Varma representing the Thompson Housing Agency, Janet Brady and Ora Chichula from the School District of Mystery Lake, and Dennis Green from the Thompson Chamber of Commerce. From the administration side, we have city manager Gary Sepatelli, Anthony McGinnis, our Director of Development Services, Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief John Mascarine, and Deputy Chief Mike Borgon, up to this point, that's, those have been the titles, Economic Development Officer Keisha Davis, Chief Building Inspector Jeff Wedge, Building Inspector Danny Haywood, Senior Clerk for Planning, Development and Safety Stacy Rockwell. There's been changes in personnel, first of all, the committee welcomes Dennis Green from the Thompson Chamber of Commerce, Baftma Varma has actually left the committee as the Thompson Housing Agency rep, and the committee thanks Baftma for her work and contributions to the DRC, a new representative from the Thompson Housing Agency is expected shortly. Some recent initiatives, leases of city land in the light industrial area and commercial zones have been let, there's several land sales are There's several land sales are in process in the industrial zone. We have a forthcoming building standards bylaw, which is to be introduced at DRC first. Cannabis zoning issues are under discussion and will be as long as the we're waiting on the province and the federal government to make certain decisions. And lifestyle housing north of the city is being planned and public meetings will be arranged shortly. Some of the major projects for this season, Thompson Lion Senior Manor, the Lions fifty five is doing really well and I encourage you to drive by and take a look at it. It's a very impressive building being built by local contractors. Our wastewater treatment plant is growing and we have, I understand, a council tour on the twenty eighth. We have the North Star Hangar, Rhoda Napin Works and New Water Treatment Plant at the Thompson Regional Airport. McDonald's Restaurant, it's disappeared and the reconstruction is soon to begin and that will be an exciting project. The Manitoba Liquor Mart in the city center market, city center mile parking lot will be going up this year. The Mystery Lake Hotel Convenience Store and Gas Bar is under construction. We continue to negotiate the cryptocurrency computing data center concept. New cannabis retail outlets are in the works. Walmart is making some major, major renovations. The Thompson General Hospital ventilation upgrades and hematology lab upgrades are underway, I believe. And the interior inn will rise again. It'll be under reconstruction soon. Twenty eighteen development projections are being prepared by administration in concert with partner organizations in the region. Currently, we're projecting more than one hundred and sixty million dollars in development investments planned in the Thompson region with a hundred and twenty million from private sector investors. And I think that speaks volumes about how the investment community feels about Thompson right now. That's very positive. And once again, this this demonstrates confidence in our local economy. The twenty eighteen building inspections report year to date, there's been twelve building permits, commercial and residential. The total construction value is eight million, one hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred dollars. In twenty seventeen, it was two million, seven hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars at the same time last year. So we have far surpassed construction value from last year and the total permit value is sixty, sixty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And that's important because that, of course, is city revenue. Some of the capital projects we can update on, well, ongoing is the wastewater treatment plant. And also the Cree Road Lift Station and the Forest Main Realignment on Princeton Drive are in process. Other capital projects, the water and sanitary main renewal have been tendered and awarded to Accurate HD. Road renewals have been tendered and awarded to Maple Leaf Construction. Multi-use path system expansion has been tendered and awarded to Maple Leaf Construction. The burnt wood trailer court drainage project has been tendered and awarded to Smoot Contractors. Additional transit shelters and new signage will be installed this year. The Public Works Garage Heat Recovery Ventilation System will be installed. Monitoring wells and leachate study at the waste disposal ground is tendered and the award is pending. And the City Hall Air Conditioning Unit retrofit fit is currently tendered on the Merck system. That's the report. And once again, I I thank Anthony McGinnis for preparing this.
Administration, anything to add? Any questions on the report? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Thank you. We're now going into resolutions. We have a resolution to approve the attendance at the AMM Northern June District Meeting, Resolution two zero one eight one three one, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Counselor Byer at the AMM Northern June Northern June District Meeting in Churchill, Manitoba on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen. And be further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw eighteen ninety seven dash two zero one three. Would the administration for support? Anything to add? Go to the mover, Counselor Valentino.
Counselors are invited to attend by conference call for that meeting also.
Counselor Ellis. Sorry, Counselor Byer?
And I'd just like to add that the the costs of this are borne by AMM.
Any none? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, do not ask me. Thank you. Sorry. Oh, sorry, let's do that again. All in favor? Carrie, do not ask me. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution for AMM to lobby the province of Manitoba to change the Mining Tax Act and to allow meaningful access to the Mining Community Reserve Fund for mining communities. Resolution two zero one eight one three two, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas the province of Manitoba has established the Mining Community Reserve Funds, MCRF, under the Mining Tax Act, M one ninety five in nineteen seventy. And whereas the mandate of the MCRF is to assist mining communities that are affected by the partial or complete mine closures. And whereas the Mining Tax Act tax identifies that up to six percent of the mining tax revenues paid exclusively by mining communities, companies, is collected annually and transferred into the fund is not adequate or sustainable. And whereas provisions in the Mining Tax Act only address monies in excess of ten million dollars and does not identify how the balance of funds can be accessed by mining communities. And whereas mining communities are being negatively impacted by prolonged periods of low commodity price and global market pressures and need meaningful access to the MCRF to mitigate the negative impacts on the communities which will benefit Manitoba as a whole. And whereas the province of Manitoba needs to amend the Mining Tax Act to adequately and proactively facilitate the access of necessary funding by mining communities in their time of need pursuant to the mandate of the MCRF. Now therefore be resolved that AMM lobby the province of Manitoba to amend the Mining Tax Act to increase the percentage of mining tax that they allocate to MCRF to ensure the funds remain sustainable and viable to the support mining communities and clarify and the clarify and the process for mining communities to access the MCRF below the ten million dollar value. Would the administration for support? Anything to add? I think, go to the mover, Counselor Ellis.
I I support this resolution going forward to AMM for for it to continue to lobby. In terms of of mining communities be able to access the Mining Community Reserve Fund, Thompson is the largest mining community in the province. And we are having difficulty accessing funds from that from that reserve. And it makes me question why that why that reserve even even exists if the largest community in this province, mining community in this province with that is seeing a significant reduction in its workforce can't receive money from this fund.
Sorry, Counselor Byer.
Thank you. I I think another reason why I I support this is it probably is is a good time. It's been several decades that this has been in place. So it's probably a good time also for a review of this fund. But I think in terms of the province wanting to reduce red tape, that the portion of the resolution that deals with clarifying the process and and ensuring that the fund remains sustainable. I think that's important to the reduction of of the red tape process. If they can clarify that process, it shouldn't be so difficult to be able to access the rules of engagement with this fund, shouldn't be so difficult to understand and follow. And I think that would be a natural a natural study for them in terms of their red tape reduction.
Thank you, Counselor Matichuk.
I will love supporting this resolution quite simply because we can't expect the province to prop us up every time we sign up for a bad deal as we did with the Granton Loop. I don't think it's their responsibility and the wording of this act is quite clear. And if we don't qualify, we don't qualify.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Wong.
I had the opportunity to talk to the minister, which is May tenth, the office. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, you said the office told me that they advise you, they're willing to help you with the expert from the office to mitigate the impact for the GIR failure. And they will help us to find out how can we reduce the budget to accommodate the downfall. So I just want to ask you what you take on that. Are you going to take the the offer of helping or you just want to go ahead and keep lobbying the Mining Reserve Fund to top up the difference? What you take on that part? I'd like to understand that.
Sure. So let me make it abundantly clear that your interpretation is wrong of what the discussion was with the province of Manitoba and the minister. What the minister, Minister Pedersen is the one we're talking about advised was that AMM, through Joe Massey, their executive director, offered to the minister to assist the city of Thompson in identifying ways to reduce our budget. We are a member of the AMM, Association of Manitoba Mining Municipalities. And as a member, this council should take great offense to that suggestion that the lobbying organization that we pay membership due can better manage our our budget or identify our budget priorities than we can as counselors. And so I made that point to Minister Pedersen that the suggestion that AMM would be able to do a better job than this council in reviewing our budget and and our budget requirements was was short of offensive. The province did not offer any assistance through the Mining Reserve Fund. They did suggest through staff that maybe there was other ways that other funds could be identified outside of the Mining Reserve Fund to assist us, which we quickly suggested that we pay annually a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars for social services. That if they wanted to pay our that bill for us, we'd gladly say yes. There were no takers to that. Counselor Valentino.
Is we shouldn't cloud this with the fact that this is just for AMM to lobby the province on our behalf. They give us this opportunity every year to bring forth resolutions from all municipalities or cities across the province where they'll do lobbying efforts on on their behalf. So this resolution not only will affect us, but it will also be a lobbying effort for the city of Flynnflon, who's looking for help also with what's coming ahead with them with their mining situation. And it has helped in the past with Lynn Lake closure and Leaf Rapids. So this is for this body, the AMM, to lobby the province on our behalf, but also it helps with our whole northern region who's in a downturn with the mining. As you'll see in the next resolution, how you ask AMM to lobby for different issues for us.
Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Smoke.
Yes, I just want to also not muddy this that basically what we're asking for is the mining companies already pay a significant task, tax. And only six percent of that goes into the mining reserve. So what they're actually asking for is that more than the six percent goes into the mining reserve or the different communities. Besides Thompson, we have Flynnflon and other few southern communities that are all being heavily affected by mining this year. And I really think that us as a council has done a good lobbying job for these dollars and will continue to do so till our term ends. So I I will support this reservation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Wong. Just before we go to a recorded vote, I just want to again clarify for the general public, this is not taxpayers' money that we're talking about. This is not provincial dollars we are talking about. The fund is funded by the mining communities that mine in the province of Manitoba. They are charged a fifteen percent tax on that. Of that six percent goes into a mining reserve fund specifically for mining companies. Non-mining companies do not have access to this fund. In the past, Leaf Rapids, Lynn Lake, Snow Lake have all accessed this fund either to assist in their operation budgets, to hire economic development officers, or in a grant process. So I want to be abundantly clear that this is not provincial taxpayer money. This is money that's provided by the mining companies to mining communities when they reduce or shut down operations. So in a recorded vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Counselor Clatta, Counselor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoke, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Counselor Matichuk, Counselor Wong. It's carried. Next, we have a resolution to for AMM to lobby the province of Manitoba to provide funding to the municipalities to compensate for the increased cost to waste disposal grounds as a result of their legislative changes. Resolution two zero one eight one three three, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoke, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Whereas the province of Manitoba continues to amend legislation regarding waste disposal grounds, changing regulations which ban certain past practices. And whereas the changes in to legislation requires municipalities to change their operations in order to abide by the new requirements. And whereas the change in operation comes at a financial cost to municipalities while also resulting in reducing the life expectancy of municipal waste disposal grounds. And whereas the province of Manitoba has not provided the necessary corresponding funding to offset these requirements, thereby downloading additional fiduciary responsibilities to municipalities. Now therefore be resolved that AMM lobby the province of Manitoba to provide appropriate funding to municipalities to offset the downloaded responsibilities that ultimately result in a decrease to the life expectancy of municipal waste disposal grounds. Would the administration for support? Anything to add? Seeing none, we'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoke. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie, do not ask. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the amended waiving of fees policy. We have a waiving fees policy amendment and a memo from the Director of Recreation, Parks and Culture. Resolution two zero one eight one three four, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the council approved the amended waiving of fees policy. Would the administration for support? Anything to add? Just add a couple of the Recreation Community Services monthly meetings.
More than a couple. This has been discussed many, many times and as part of even through our budget process, this has been discussed. So I'm happy to see this is finally brought forth from the Rec Committees.
Any questions? Counselor Matichuk.
I will love supporting this because quite simply, I think each applicant should be it should be based on their own merit. Some would be more deserving than others, of course.
I know we discussed this at great length, but I can no longer support this myself. In light of new information, talking to people about who host some of the events that that we have way for, they bring people into Thompson and that's a benefit to our economy because the people who visit Thompson for some of the events spend money there, whether it's in hotels or to shop or whatever. I think I would feel more comfortable if we were able to discuss this and look at the impacts of the events that are being put on to the city before we discussed whether we would be waiving fees or not waiving fees. So I realize that's a future budget discussion, but until that time, I can't support this.
Thank you. Counselor Valentino.
We had, we did discuss that at the Rec Committee meetings and we also discussed that when situations like that arise where events are taking place with hotel rooms, that now we will also have those organizations make contact with the newly formed Thompson Hotel Association to make up some of the difference perhaps or look at some of their granting processes.
Well, when I look at the the budget that we are waiving the fee annually, give and take is about seventy nine thousand dollars, which is close enough, eighty thousand. If we if we sharpen our pencil more, I believe we can able to to achieve the number that without impact the the nonprofit organization. And also throughout the budget deliberation, I did mention about the land fee, lease fee reduction for waiving hundred percent, maybe twenty percent to start and fifty percent to start. I did not say all the other event, which is like the Remembrance Day, the Walk for, what you call the the one just happened, the Relay for Life. And I I heard so many problem about all this fee to be waived and also the what you call the the kit for the light. Thank you. So those are, I'm not talking about totally charge them. Those are the one I would like to continue because those are the good event for Thompson. So I cannot support this and recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Just before, any other counsel? Okay, Counselor Ellis.
I I will be in support of this. It's it was definitely, it's part of our budget deliberations. We decided that this would be the course of action and now our counselors have said there's an about face and what in their feelings. I'm willing to to go forward with what with what the city of, what the council had agreed on in its budget and it's needed in terms of what we need to and need to cut in this budget.
Deputy Mayor Smoke.
Supporting this. We talked through budget deliberations and at least one counselor made many comments about giving away. about giving away too many freebies is changing their vote on this. I would like us maybe to talk with the groups later down the line, but at this time, I will support this resolution.
If council would indulge, as a mayor, I want to make a couple of comments. One, I'm astounded by the comments that are made tonight in front of the cameras. We went through this discussion administratively, we went through this discussion with budget. Administratively, it was pointed out who would be affected, how they would be affected. We directed administration to implement the fees to reduce the 100% waiver to one organization, and that was Remembrance Day. We had a lengthy discussion on that in council as a budget deliberation. It was the consensus of council at the time, of all of council, that we go to one organization because of the role the veterans have played in Canada and the world, that that would waive 100%. Everyone else would follow the rules of nonprofit and apply for 50% reduction. And there were discussions where we could accommodate with the addition of the Hotel Association, where there was an economic impact, that there may be resources available through that fund or through that organization to offset costs that we would be charging. We, as administrative, reported last year, waived in the $90,000 range of fees, which is approximately 1% tax increase to the rate periods of Thompson. So once again, we provided direction, and those have been implemented. The Knights of Columbus paid. The Relay for Life paid. And now to do an about face at this point, astounds me. So with that, in a recorded vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Councillor Ellis, Councillor Clatta, Councillor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Councillor Madichuk, Councillor Byer, Councillor Wong. It's carried. A resolution to approve waiver of recreation fees for the National Health and Fitness Day. Ironic. Justice Burgemi letter and a memo from the Director of Recreation, Parks and Culture. Resolution 2018-135, moved by Councillor Ellis, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas June 2, 2018, is National Health and Fitness Day, and whereas to increase participation and enhance the health of all citizens of Thompson, the Department of Recreation, Parks and Culture will provide free activities at the Thompson Regional Community Center and at the Norplex Pool. And whereas staff has planned additional events in June 1 in order to ensure that there is no conflict where previously booked community events now therefore be resolved, council approved to waive the fees for the activities that are directly related to National Health and Fitness Day scheduled for June 1 and 2, 2018, will go to administration for support.
Staff are working on the different activities, and going with June 1, that's at the pool, and we didn't want to bump some of the groups out that already had rentals on June 2. And also, in terms of these fees, staff will be putting on a lot of the activities themselves, so there's no staffing costs, additional staffing costs for those.
Go to the mover, Councillor Ellis. Council, any questions? Councillor Wong?
If any one of you agree with this resolution to approve waiving, you just contradict yourself from the last, you just approved the waiving fee policy.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? It's tied, it's defeated. Next, we have a resolution to request technical and fitness or financial assistance for the Manitoba Water Services Board for Phase 3 of Water and Sanitary Main Renewal Board. We have a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-136, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Councillor Byer. Whereas on May 7, 2018, council passed Resolution Number 2018-123, requesting monies in the amount of $250,000 for the engineering and design of Phase 3 Water and Sanitary Main Renewal, and to wrap up Phase 1. And whereas the city of Thompson is requesting technical and financial assistance for the Phase 3 of the Water and Sanitary Main Renewal Project, now therefore be resolved the council formally request technical and financial assistance from the Manitoba Water Services Board for Phase 3 of the Water and Sanitary Main Renewal Project. We'll go to administration for support. Anything? Anthony?
Follow-up resolution from the one that came last week, or the last council meeting, where we are requested to access the $250,000, and it will be followed up with a third resolution in an upcoming meeting to complete the process.
We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, this is obviously not a red tape reduction plan, but we will do the three resolutions that are needed to get the money that we've applied for.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation prices for the feasibility study on leachate and design of monitoring wells at the landfill. We have a tabulation prices, and we have a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-137, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Councillor Byer. Be resolved the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the feasibility study on leachate and design of monitoring wells at the landfill to Tetra Tech for their tendered price of $29,646, all taxes included as per tender file number 10718. Vote Administration for support. Anything to add?
It was reviewed at a special meeting in Public Works and Infrastructure last week, and recommended to be brought forward to council.
We'll go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak.
Besides that, we have tabulation of prices brought forward to us by management tonight to set out the hourly rates and that.
Council, any questions? See, Councillor Wong?
Okay, I'd like the management to explain the functionality of the leachate pond for the public, to understand what are we doing this for, please?
Leachate pond is associated with the waste disposal site. It collects all of the water waste that accumulates inside the site, as well as all the rain and runoff, and then it puts it into a pond so that it doesn't discharge to the environment. The one that we have right now has been determined to be inadequate. It's a design that's useful in the southern climate, but it's based on evaporation. We don't have enough evaporation where we are, and basically it's accumulating where it's up to the point that it'll start to overflow. So our previous consultants and environmental officers have said that we should have this studied and come up with an alternative plan for that. And the monitoring wells are also for the same reason, to make sure that none of the liquids that are inside the engineered cells are migrating out into the environment, so it'll allow the city to test and make sure that nothing's migrating. So it's an environmental liability.
My second question is, how long ago that we hired someone to did this study and create the leachate pond and the monitoring system in place? How long ago before we need to do another study today?
Till the next time?
No, how long ago we did that study?
Sorry, I'll have to get back to you on that. That's well before I was hired.
Because I read your memo there, you said the city hired KGS Group to conduct the environment liability assessment study on this facility, which means we hired this time to get, to study this leachate pond. And also the question I'd like to ask, why the six monitoring well not functioning? We already had the study, and then they designed to have a six monitoring pond or well to get the sample for the leachate pond. So that means the previous person who did the study, or the company did the study, did not fulfill what the requirement, that's why it caused us to get another study again, in my opinion. When I look at the explanation from the memo...
My understanding is that the leachate pond was already in place when we inherited the waste disposal site. It was a study, the previous study was not to design, the previous study was to tell us what did we have, and they recommended that we have another study done to tell us what we should replace it with. That wasn't part of the scope of their previous work. So they told us that we had a leachate pond that was non-functional, they recommended that we do another study and design to replace it, and they told us that we had wells that were there already, but they were not functioning, so that we had to come up with a new design to replace those.
But one thing really struck me with the KGS Group, they are the one we hired to do this study, to recommend this is what we need to do. And the same time, they are the one who bid on the job as well, so it's kind of, I don't get the point there, you know what I mean? They are the one who tell us this is what we need to do, and turn around, this is what we need to spend. So I just need to understand why, why we get them to hire, hire them to study what we need to do, and turn around, they're able to bid on the job as well. So it's kind of like, in my opinion, it looks like they can tell us what we don't need to do, but is it really this is what we need to do? I need to get the third-party opinion instead of the person that did the study and the person bid on the job, and it's just kind of fishy, in my opinion.
Just to clarify that, and again, Councillor Wong, I want to choose your words carefully in regards to fishy. There's nothing fishy about this. KGS was hired to identify what we had. They're an engineering firm that does that work. They're also an engineering firm of many that do design work. So when we went out for design, they were an eligible company to bid on design, as was the company that bid against them. So they aren't pre-qualified or pre-disqualified because they, in the review, recommended the leachate ponds, and this should be done, and how it should be done. That doesn't disqualify them from bidding on another service within their corporation. Correct? Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. And I believe in public tendering processes, we can't discriminate, so if they want to apply for the next tender, they're able to. The only other thing that I would add is that this issue was also noted by the provincial environment officers, so that did provide a third party, as well as our own internal engineering staff had noted that they thought there was an issue. So that's why it went out for another round of study.
My question is, there's a significant difference in the two quotes that came to us. I understand that there's a logical reason why there's such a difference, and can we explain that to the public, please?
The reasons for the differences are the technical approaches. This is an RFP, it's a request for proposal, so the engineering firms are allowed to come up with their own methodology of how they're going to meet our requirements, and because they have very different approaches, they come up with very different prices. Without getting to the technical things that they were proposing, one of them proposed a lot more field work than the other. One of them felt that there was less field work required because the city had adequate data, and they felt they could save us costs.
My last comment is, I believe this study would come back and tell us, all you need to do is dig a bigger pond for evaporation. So to spend almost $30,000 to tell them, ask them to come back and tell us, all you need to do is just dig a bigger pond for evaporation, I think it's kind of waste of money.
Record vote, please. So just again, to clarify statements made by Councillor Wong, who is not an engineer, that the last public meeting, Public Works meeting, it was explained the mechanism of leachate ponds and how it works or doesn't work in northern Manitoba, and another industry explained their experience and their lack of success, of which that meeting you attended. So again, to the general public, this is an open process from an engineering firm doing scientific work to assist the city of Thompson to meet an environmental risk that's been identified by the province of Manitoba and the city of Thompson. In a recorded vote, call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Councillor Byer, Councillor Ellis, Councillor Clatta, Councillor Valentino, Deputy Mayor Smoak, Mayor Fenske. Voting opposed, Councillor Madichuk, Councillor Wong. It's carried. A resolution to approve the tabulation prices for the feasibility study, did I just did that one? Nope, just did that one. A resolution to approve the tabulation prices for the 2018 ready-mixed concrete requirements, and there's tabulation prices. Resolution 2018-138, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Councillor Valentino. Be resolved the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the tender to ready-mixed concrete requirements to Multicrete Systems, Inc., for their tendered price of $42,543, all taxes included as per tender file number 11418. We'll vote Administration for support. Yep, Jen?
It's an annual tender process for the concrete requirements. It's budgeted for various work throughout the city that is done mainly in the summer season. It's coming to council for approval, as we only had one response to the tender.
Go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak. Council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the tabulation prices for the purchase of mixed topsoil, and we have the tabulation prices. Resolution 2018-139, moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Councillor Byer. Be resolved the council approve the recommendation of the purchasing agent and award the purchase of mixed topsoil to Asa Patch Trucking Limited for their tendered price of $35,752.50, all taxes included as per tender file number 11618. Go to administration for support. Jen?
Again, this is an annual tender process for the annual topsoil requirements for the city work done throughout the summer. It's coming to council again for approval, as there's only one response to the tender.
Thank you. We'll go to Deputy Mayor Smoak as the mover. Thank you. Council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Now we have a resolution to approve land lease agreements between the city of Thompson and Asa Patch Trucking Limited for part of Lot 3, Block 4, Plan 563730. We have the lease agreement and a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-140, moved by Councillor Valentino, seconded by Councillor Byer. Be resolved the council approve the land lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Asa Patch Trucking Limited for the following property, in the city of Thompson being part of Lot 3, Block 4, Plan 563730. Vote Administration for support. Anything?
That it's been reviewed at Development Review Committee several times. The only thing that makes this a slightly non-standard lease is that we've inserted a clause that if the city decides to sell the lot, that they will have to vacate the lot within 14 days.
Go to the mover, Councillor Valentino?
I can have the Development Review Committee meetings where this has been discussed, and I'll be supporting this, and I think it's good to have some of this land finally leased out properly.
I have only one concern on this one, and that is, we're letting people rent or lease across the street from themselves, and my concern would be that they start using the street as part of their yard, so we need our enforcement people to keep a close watch on this. No reason why it can't work, but it's quite possible that it won't.
Councillor Byer?
Two things. One is, there's already people parking on the other side of the road, and it doesn't seem to be a problem that they're using the road as a parking lot. I would anticipate that that doesn't change. The other thing is, I would like to commend Asa Patch for being one of the first to step forward and be respectful of our request that people don't squat on the property, that they actually lease the property.
Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve land lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Matador Investments Limited for part of Public Environment Reserve Block 13, Plan 739, N L T O, N Division. We have the lease agreement and a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018-141, moved by Councillor Valentino, seconded by Councillor Byer. Be resolved the council approve the land lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Matador Investments Limited for the following property, in the city of Thompson being part of Public Environment Reserve Block 13, Plan 739, N L T O, N Division. Vote Administration for support. Anthony?
In our DRC meetings, it was referred to as a J.B. Johnson property. Turns out that this property is owned by Matador Investments, which is a subsidiary of J.B. Johnson, so the lease that is changed to reflect that.
Councillor Valentino?
Information here has been at Development Review.
Councillor, any questions? Councillor Wong?
I believe that one of the conversation we had is the driveway. It's not wide enough, it requires 17 and a half feet wide, but they only have 14 and a half. Did they get a variance for that?
We didn't pursue a variance because the way that it's been dealt with is that it would be a one-way, so it would be treated as a lane, and because it's a lane, it does have the width that's required under the zoning bylaw. So there's stipulations within this lease as to how it has to be signed, how it has to be fenced, and how the traffic has to be controlled. There's also limits on who can use the back parking lot versus the front parking lot. So the back parking lot is limited only to staff of the occupying the building. The front parking lot will be open to the public.
And my second question, I believe if the variance notice been out for the public to against or agree, right?
Sorry, there is no variance.
No?
It meets as, under the stipulations for having a single lane, it meets the current requirements of the city of Thompson's zoning bylaw.
Okay. Councillor Madichuk?
That was going to be my question, whether or not there was a variance in place or going to be for that lane, because it does affect the neighboring property. I think they should be at least consulted on this.
Again, for clarification, Anthony helped me out, the question of the variation was dealt with in that it's not a road, it's being used as a lane, and the legislation within our process allows the lane to be identified without a variation. But to Councillor Madichuk's... Okay, but to Counsel Madichuk's point, talking to the neighbor if it hasn't already occurred, probably advisable? Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. We have the two added resolutions, Resolution 2018142 moved by Deputy Mayor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Counselor Byer at AMM Board Meeting in Porchus Le Prairie, Manitoba on May 23rd and May 24th, 2018. Be further resolved, the attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Vote administration for support, anything to add? Go to the mover, Deputy Mayor Smoak, anything?
No, the clause born with this or through AMM.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Madichuk?
I can support this only if it's not going to affect quorum on the committees. We are canceling way too many committee meetings because we cannot meet quorum. It's happening more often than not.
Just to remind counsel and the general public, that the process of appointing committee members and chairpersons was gone through the organizational process, and there were a number of counselors who didn't put their name forward. Counsel Byer?
We may well have to reschedule the Development Review Committee on Thursday. I'm not sure if we, who's, if Counselor Calada's in town, or if you are in town, then we don't, Mayor Fenske, you're in town, then we don't have to reschedule, my presence is not required, so.
Counsel Wong?
To me, I have to disagree with your comment, because yes, the chair is pointed by you, and Counselor Calada been nominated between Counselor Madichuk and myself to the co-chair, we all got defeated by the rest of the council. So we did try to be part of it, but all of you guys did not want us to be part of it. So your comment is not true?
Agree to disagree. Thank you. Call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Last resolution is Resolution 2018143 moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, the council approved the attendance of Counselor Byer at the Community Futures North Central Development Annual General Meeting in Churchill, Manitoba on May 31st, 2018. Be further resolved, that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Vote administration for support, anything? No? Mover, Counsel Valentino?
I'll be supported.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Byer?
Yes, this is totally my mistake. I have to make a correction, the AGM is actually in Thompson, I confirmed that this morning. I apologize to our administration, who has to put the resolutions together, but it's actually in Thompson. So I'm not sure if a resolution is still required.
This is, this is in regards to travel, correct, Jen? That's why we'd have the resolution? So I guess from the council's perspective, the resolution is not required, so I would ask that council dismiss this resolution and not be voting on it? Everybody's in agreement? Thank you. Okay, so next up is the mayor's report. This is from May 8th to 22nd. As advised, attended the Provincial Municipal Justice Advisory Committee meeting in Winnipeg on May 11th, attended the Federal Provincial Contract Management Committee meetings in Ottawa on May 14th to 16th, along with Counselor Byer, met with Special Assistant Municipal Relations on May 17th. The bi-weekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continue, the water treatment plant meetings are held on a quarterly basis. Various committee members' meetings were held, Development Review, Public Safety for Recreation and Community Services, Human Resources, Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs, and Special In Camera, Public Works and Infrastructure. Community cleanup for 2018, we have a poster that's on our website. The cleanup, Clean Community Day is June 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., registered at Robben Stone, it's gloves, bags, and water is provided. E-waste, waste disposal grounds, Saturdays 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., open May 5th to October 27th. Clean Community Month, May 22nd to June 25th, call Public Works, it's 2046777970 for details. Compost site, grass clippings and leaves, open 24/7 beside the Public Works yard. Business Challenge, June 1st, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., registered at City Hall, gloves, bags, and water provided. Earn $3 a bag, great fundraising, fundraising opportunity, again, contact Public Works for that. Please take part in our annual community spring cleanup and help keep Thompson clean and beautiful. And just on that note, I would like to thank the staff of the City of Thompson, and also the residents of the City of Thompson that was out of the community for the last seven or eight days, and came back into a significantly cleaner community, and so I want to applaud all the efforts that was done by individuals, companies, organizations to help clean up our city. So once again, job well done, it continues for the month of May and into June, so keep it going. With that, we'll now go to counselors for any city business they attended on between May 8th and 22nd. Deputy Mayor Smoak?
Yes, actually, I didn't attend council on May 7th. I went to the funeral of Nitsusoea cre nation of three young lads that were killed on the highway. It was a very emotional day, so I apologize that I wasn't here, but it was very important that I was there. Just to add to the spring cleanup, June 1st to 3rd is the waste disposal grounds is open for household garbage. That doesn't include your mattresses, fridges and that, but for household garbage, there's free dumping from June 1st to 3rd. May the 11th, we, counselors and myself and Anthony and Gary attended Assets Management Workshop. It was really something to see, but how we can just get a grip on everything that's happening and how we can manage our assets for the city. On May 14th, I attended a Look North meeting in the Paw, and again, we talked about education in the north, including different resources from all over the north in making the north grow. Then on May 18th, we had Northern Workforce Development Center at U C N, grand opening, two rooms, Room 231 and 232. I was attended with Counselor Valentino and Anthony, we were all there. It was a great day for Thompson for the workforce development, and we had a good turnout of ministers and local celebrities there that are into the education part of it. And in between there, we, last week, we had a conference call with One North, which is a train to Churchill group, and we're told to be looking forward to some news maybe coming shortly. Everything is still in the works, but there's nothing that can actually be said in public yet. Thank you.
Counsel Valentino?
On the 11th, I gave greetings on behalf of the city to the School of Social Work. They had three graduates this year, and we are very proud to have the University of Manitoba School of Social Work program here in our city. And I think they might be taking intakes already for September if people are interested. Definitely a needed profession here. May 12th, I gave greetings at the Norman North Star banquet. We were very honored to have Matt Backhouse come back to speak, he was the guest speaker, and he was also an alumni from the Humboldt Broncos. So he had a very good message to give to not only the players, but to all of us in the room, and I believe you can see that on YouTube and on Shaw. Is that correct, Paul? Yeah, so you can get a chance to listen to his speech.
Sorry, Counsel Byer. Line is eight.
One of the, I also attended the AMM Asset Management Workshop, and one of the other benefits is when you, once you've taken the workshops, there's actually another part to this, you are more likely to be eligible for grants down the road, was one of the comments they made. I was at Vision Quest, May 14th to 18th, and I have a few, few notes, and I have a few things that I brought back for our staff in terms of economic development, and I'll be passing on to Anthony, and some things for the Recreation Department, too. A couple of the things that I attended, the Understanding Barriers to Accessibility was an extremely good workshop to attend. They didn't just discuss the physical aspects of accessibility, but the customer service aspects, and the, the direction is that eventually customer service training in terms of accessibility will become the standard and a requirement. So as we move forward, and I understand the Society for Manitobans with Disabilities in Thompson will be putting on a workshop in June addressing this, so I think it's something that employers and ourselves as an employer can certainly keep on our radar. Earl Lambert, as a motivational speaker, had several comments to make on leadership. What was noteworthy was, this is a young man, well, young man, I guess by whatever standards, but as a younger man, he had a pretty rough childhood and was in jail, and his, his story was just not a pleasant one. And he, he didn't have anything fall into his lap in terms of helping him make better choices, but while he was sitting in jail, he started reading biographies of people who have accomplished great things, and he came to realize that he could create, accomplish great things as well, if he set his mind to it and if he started seeking different choices. So he has an incredible story, he's also into hip-hop, he's also a comedian and a great entertainer, so especially the youth in the audience enjoyed him. Shauna Morgan Caesar's Seagulls talked about land use planning. Tagu Wagon was, I didn't, I wasn't sure at first heading into this how this would relate to us, it was on bear paw teaching and healing, but actually, it's in relation to empowering people, in particular Aboriginal indigenous people, to pursue entrepreneurial goals. There was another session on the indigenous strategies between the indigenous demographic and industry, social enterprise, development training, and also building urban industries for local development, so there is, and that talked an awful lot about some of the barriers to employment as well that we face in Thompson, so it was very good. The trade show was remarkable, they had 90 booths set up there, and again, I've got some materials that I'll share with our administration, but it was an incredible variety of information from manufacturing to crafts to loans and that sort of, sort of thing was good. And also, while there, there was a social function, I probably saw already that I had an opportunity to meet with Eileen Clark, just briefly, it was a social event, so you don't get into any, any heavy lobbying, but we did have some polite discussion on Thompson. And May 18th, yes, the morning before we left, along with Dennis Green from Community Futures, North Central Development, and Keith McDonald of the Chamber of Commerce, and Tim Gibson of Thompson 2020, we toured the Composites Innovation Center, and it's a remarkable facility dealing with composite materials, and they have a proposal to cred, or they would like to give to cred, for building a greenhouse classroom made out of composite material. It's really fabulous, and they would actually, they're actually considering Thompson as a location to, to do this in. So in terms of economic development, which is what I was hoping for, there was lots of things came out of this trip to Vision Quest, so thank you to council for voting to allow me to go.
Madichuk?
Just want to give a little unfortunate update to Colleen's statement on the OmniTrax. I was watching CBC about a half hour before I came to this meeting, and the statement was, on the bottom of the screen was, talks between the consortium and OmniTrax have broken apart.
Just to clarify, the news report, and it was on the news today, that is with I Churchill, the second group, the Look North group is, is continuing negotiations with, with OmniTrax. I Churchill put a proposal in a couple months ago, and through discussions with the federal government and with OmniTrax, as of today, have pulled out, so they're back to one, one group as opposed to two organizations.
So they didn't document any new?
Yep, correct. Any other comments? Seeing none, look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Ellis? Counselor Byer? And Counselor Ellis? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.